Day seventeen. Call this meeting to order where everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
And we are a republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, council, we have roll call. Ms. Martinez?
Um, all counselors present except for counselor Carson, which he may be late.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, the agenda approval, counselor Yan V. Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented, excusing Mr. Carson if and when he's late to the meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. The next item uh that we have on the agenda is our citizen comment section. During this, these citizen comments, we do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. We have a clock right there that will be set to three minutes instead of the ten minutes that is set at right now. Uh, it will be set for three minutes. If you're still talking at the three-minute mark, I will politely ask you to end your comments at that time so that everyone has an equal opportunity to say what's on their mind. We have several uh cars tonight, so we do ask that we, as council, will not go back and forth with you. But if you have a question, state your question, and we're taking notes as well as our legal counsel and our city manager and our city clerk, they're taking notes as well. So you're, if you stay uh during the course of the meeting, you might end up hearing the answer to a question that you may pose. Um, we do once again um ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes and be mindful, thoughtful, and respectful uh in your comments. Okay, with that being said, the first one I have is um Diane uh Woodard. Okay, if you could come up to the mic and speak into one of those microphones, the red light is on.
Uh, I just wanted to make a request for more meetings having to do with development along the river, the Rio Grande in Alamosa. And the reason for this is um, it it may be a lot that I'm a biology major and I just see things sometimes seem to be happening kind of fast and it's hard even for people in the city to keep up with what's going on over there sometimes, or we're not sure. And I personally am agreeing and want to conserve wildlife. But regardless, my main request is just for more meetings having to do with what are possibilities and if we need money, what are the many sources of money in this country? So, that's all.
Thank you. Up next, um, we we don't do applause in here, please, so we do ask that you keep your applause to yourself and please uh do not make any uh gestures uh when someone is speaking. We want to make sure that everyone is heard. Thank you. Okay, next, Ms. Ruthie Brown.
Ruthie Brown, you all know me. Do you all know where Mom's Garden is? Does everyone? Jackie, do you know? You know, it's a garden I've worked on, I I thought for only thirty to thirty-five years, but as my little brain gets working, it's probably closer to forty years. Forty years I have worked at trying to beautify Alamosa, and it's the only garden left. And if I do say so myself, it's looking pretty fabulous right now. It it's, and and we have some piles in the front only because we're digging and dividing and putting in new plants that either I am buying or people donate money, ten bucks, so I can buy new plants, but the insult is, is that last year, after forty years of blood, sweat, and tears and a lot of money, the city of Alamosa started charging for the water. It was mind-boggling at first, I kind of cried, and uh it's not about the money because it's a hundred, hundred and fifty bucks, and I can raise that in in thirty minutes when my letter gets to the newspaper, but um, I understand Colorado law says you have to meter every meter, domestic and whatever, and then there must be some city ordinance that says you have to charge. All I can say is shame on the city of Alamosa. For I I'm not going to step up and beg you to give me that money, that, I wouldn't take your money because people will support me on that garden. It's a beautiful garden, the city bulldozed it at one time, bulldozed the whole garden, even though it is not city property. I started over again. C D O T bulldozed the garden because of road construction. And at that time, my mother passed away, so I thought, what the heck? Let's call it Mom's Garden. Who would bulldoze Mom's Garden? Anyway, I I would encourage all of you to take a look at, a close look, I'd give you a tour, and and figure out that if my family and my business only spent a minimum of a thousand dollars a year, which is probably two or three times that, that's forty thousand dollars, but I sure am glad that I can pay the city of Alamosa a hundred and fifty.
Thank you. Up next, we have Jeremy Garner.
Are these both on blue?
Yes, sir, yes, they're on.
We can hear you.
Alright, so I came to address you folks about police misconduct again. I've been informed by Ty Coleman, who had a discussion with me, I will not be able to reserve a specific amount of time, which I thought it was under the impression that it would be allowed. Um, apparently, I'm only allowed three minutes, and I'll have to return. So you might see me again on the first of next month uh to talk more on the issue of uh police misconduct. I will be returning next month to speak more upon police misconduct, and I apologize for the microphone thing, I'm a little not used to microphones, sir, sorry. Um, but yes, police misconduct is something for real, I have some documents here. Uh, the things that I'm talking with Police Chief Dean uh Dean Felder um has been a little bit dishonest coming from him, and I'm a little concerned him coming from uh Montevista. I will be going to the City Hall uh meeting tomorrow there, though I don't live there, I I grew up, you know, potatoes were, I I I lived out there too. So um I'm going to address the Jesus prayer, that is, uh, they they serve, they ask God or Jesus to prepare themselves with Gigi telling me that the God is for Buddhists and everything, which doesn't make any sense when you're praying to Jesus, but that that'll be for City Hall, I definitely encouraging you folks to check that one out as well. Um, my point here is misconduct, Dean Felder coming from Montevista is just a crazy coincidence to me, so I just wanted to incorporate that, I know they're a little bit different. But now that I'm dealing with this person who did invite Jesus to guide people, I'm finding myself misguided again by um Jesus-type of people, and I've faced con misconduct, not just from police officers, but other community members in the Boys and Girls of America and the Riverlife God. Now, there's been a deprivation of my rights under color of law that can't be recognized, and I wish I had more time to speak about that. Unfortunately, I'm only given three minutes with a buck twenty-four left on on the clock, so with a buck twenty-four, I just want to say, I have a lot of things, and I've tried to talk to Dim Delet. I I've tried to record our conversations because I just so, it's been dishonest to nothing, and when I begin recording my conversations, there's no video. He only responds to me by shaking his head, no. So everything I say to him doesn't get an actual physical response, it's only my voice on the recordings. It's frustrating, I feel there's just so much dishonesty here, and there's just so many points of corruption and dishonesty that I've asked and I've heard her speak with him again, I've been given the term mental illness, but I'm also a victim of crime too. So I hope that the mental illness does not negate what I say, because what I say is valid. I have many uh compliments from sociological professors coming from the C and M, ones that teach at the university too. I was listed on Blackboard for actually instructing his students and teaching them as well. What's strange about that is he would tell me I was always right on my questions, when a lot of students wouldn't get right. I gave up sociology or TV for for um like sociology when Mr. Banger used to teach here at the seventh grade in middle school. And I'm just a little discouraged because they were such great education, and that's one teacher I didn't trust with the things I had to trust with them, but there are even teachers in Alamosa, Colorado, who never spoke up to me and deprived my rights. So that's why I'm asking for police misconduct to be considered, and when I speak to Chief Din- Dean Felder, I'm concerned that he's not going to appreciate my truth and he's going to dismiss me, so that's why I'm here speaking, that's my time.
Thank you. Up next, I have Ms. Shana McRae.
Hello, everybody. Uh, my name is Shana McRae, I live here in Alamosa. Um, it's been seven years, seven years of missed opportunity and tax revenue and all kinds of things that um we tried to champion a few years ago to bring to the community. Um, I think it's very wise of you to go ahead and ask the questions again of voters. You should constantly be taking the temperature of your community and finding out what it is that they want to bring in, whether it's goods or services, whether it's popular and unpopular, whether it's available to everyone on a federal level or on a state level, it shouldn't matter. I'm just glad that you're contemplating, putting a question on the ballot to the voters. I hope that it's a fair question about taxation and where the money's going to go to help our community. So remember that those have to be kinds of separate issues. Um, I've also been approached to ask our county commissioners to have them revisit the questions individually rather than lumping them all together and having the question fail. Asking for individual pieces of the cannabis industry, retail stores, medical stores, mips, which are infused kitchens where they make edibles, and grow-ups, testing facilities, things like that. Understand, y'all don't want all that here in the city, which is why I challenge our county commissioners to consider the questions for our county options for the ballot this year. Um, voter turnout is going to be really high, we expect a lot of people to be getting to the polls this year, whether it's to make their choice for president or for Congress or for something local. Okay, I know there's a lot of people here tonight, most are in, you know, some way familiar with marijuana, but I would like to see my hands of people that are here to support the council coming up with ballot question so that we can vote on it. And these are the kinds of things that we want y'all to remember as leaders of our city, that we have issues and questions and things that we want to see happen too. So we do bring that to you, we thank you for answering that call and for doing something about it. Um, it's past time, it's high time, so thank you.
Thank you. Hey, uh, Carol Emerson?
My name is Carol Hermanson, and I'm here to talk about the uh Tell Your Children the Truth about Marijuana, Mental Illness, and Violence. Conventional wisdom says that cannabis doesn't increase violence because people mellow out when stoned. That may be true of some, but not all, as shown by a number of studies. Researchers have found marijuana use or abuse is strongly associated with violence, more so than alcohol in many cases. A study from the Journal of Interpersonal Violence, two thousand thirteen, twelve thousand foreign and American high school students were examined, they found recently used, who had recently used marijuana were more than three times as likely to be physically aggressive. A two thousand sixteen paper in Psychological Medicine examined marijuana and criminal behavior among four hundred boys in London, forty years beginning in nineteen sixty-one. They associated, this was associated with a nine-fold increase in violent behavior. Two thousand thirteen paper, American Journal of Psychiatry, two hundred and seventy-eight people charged with homicides. It found that ninety defendants had been diagnosed with cannabis dependence or abuse, compared to sixty-five with alcohol dependence or abuse. Two thousand eight paper, three thousand vacationers in the Spanish resort areas, factors predicted fighting, cannabis use doubled the risk. Papers in social psychiatry, on and on, there are more studies, but I won't have enough time to do it all. Um, marijuana doesn't cause aggression in all users. Many relax, but some become paranoid and some have full-blown psychotic episodes. Marijuana causes paranoia and psychosis. Marijuana dispensaries even advertise certain types as less likely to cause paranoia. Paranoia and psychosis cause violence, overwhelming evidence links psychotic disorders and violence, especially murder. A study in New Zealand had a four-fold risk for violence when alcohol was uh twice. Study demonstrated both marijuana disorder and schizophrenic were eighteen times more likely to commit violence as the average person. First states to legalize marijuana, Alaska, Colorado, Oregon, Washington, have seen their murder rates and aggravated assaults increase much faster than U.S. rates. Not everyone that uses marijuana will have these effects, but um I've got so much more to cover, and I won't have the time to do so.
Well, thank you so much, I'm going to have to ask you to um end your com- comments now, thank you so much, your three minutes are up. Okay, up next, we have Dale Gay.
Don't start until I start talking about this topic. My name is Delbert Gay, I was a city councillor for twelve years. The topic is marijuana. Marijuana is and always has been a gateway drug to other more difficult drugs. The city council, when they had the opportunity to begin with, when marijuana was legalized as a medical marijuana, did not allow medical marijuana in the city of Alamosa. And then when recreational marijuana was added, they didn't allow that either. At a point in time, a group, an organization, she spoke today, got a petition out, and they got enough signatures on the petition to put it on the ballot. There are over two thousand citizens that voted in that election in November, and they voted it down. Medical marijuana, they voted down by sixty, over sixty percent. And recreational marijuana, they voted it down by sixty-three percent, and that was just seven years ago in in two thousand seventeen. Now, I read in the newspaper where, and on the agenda, where the city councillors are thinking about making a motion, item four A. Motion to refer in a a question of legalizing retail outlets for medical marijuana and recreational marijuana to the voters in the November ballot. How can the vote, how can the city councillors do that, make a motion and pass that without having it go through uh the citizens in the form of uh I already said what it was, uh, a petition? I mean, I don't think you have the authority to sit here tonight after your city manager says, we can get so much money from tax revenue. You're here to protect the public, and the public are the kids. And anyone that would be smoking marijuana is going to be hurt. You're here to protect us, not to ja- you know, how can we get more revenue into the city conference? That's not your job. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. The next card I have is a Fred Holman.
Thank you, yes, my name is Fred Holman. Uh, I agree with Dale Gay and his comments, and that's what I'm here to talk about also. Uh, I live across the street, right north of the junior high. Most nights, I smell marijuana in my yard, most nights, that you can be outside. The other night, I stepped out about midnight, there were two youth going by on the hu- on the school side, on the sidewalk, and they were both smoking marijuana as they rode their skateboards. They, I don't know how they are, they may have been twenty twenty-one, but they looked like youth to me, and uh they were on the school property too, and I don't think it's allowed on school property, for one thing. Uh, the other thing I wanted to comment on is uh, I believe the city already allows a person, if they want it, to grow a certain amount, i- i- I'm not sure that that's still the case, but the last I knew it was. I, for many years, worked uh where I was in a lot of people's yards, and uh you might be surprised how many people grow it, and probably more than what the city allows. So I I'm ag- I'm against it totally. Uh, I think that Dale mentioned that this did come up for a vote seven years ago, it was defeated rather soundly, so I I hope that it doesn't come again. And uh, I don't think it should be about money either, about how much taxes you can raise. I do look at it as a hindrance, especially when it falls in the hands of our youth. And the more available that it becomes, the more likely it is it's going to fall in the hands of youth that aren't supposed to be using it. I I I've seen it. Uh, you know, I I don't know what the age limit is on it, eighteen, twenty-one, uh, but I've seen younger than that, and I see in the paper the things that I'm sure that are caused by that, uh, people being arrested. And uh, so that's my opinion, I am against it, I'd hate to see you uh put it on the ballot, I uh, believe Brother Gay's right, if somebody wants to put it on the ballot, they should come up with signatures, enough signatures to do it. Uh, one last thing, different subject, uh, and I didn't put that on my thing, is there any update on the pedestrian bridge at the college? I think that that was in the comments uh uh some time ago, and I would like to see that, I think it's, it would be a nice thing, especially for the athletes, and uh since I live where I do, it's handy for me, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and Daniel Paul Roach? Sir, Daniel Paul Roach? Okay, alright, if you can. So Daniel, excuse me, if you could, go behind the mic, because we have people on Zoom who are listening as well, and they cannot hear you while you're standing there.
And shout out to everybody on Zoom right now, shout out to everyone here. Um, I've got in sh- I've got shoes right now, and I'm proud of these shoes. These shoes came from a good friend, um, a frie- a good friend of mine that is in um Tent City. My dog, Jazz, Ruthie, you know Jazz, Jazz, sit. Good girl, where we been? We've been to Ruthie, Tim, we'll talk after this, yeah, sit. Um, I came into this town homeless, I want to be a member of your community. I'm working with Ruthie, I'm working with Tim, I've declared myself the mayor of Tent City. These shoes are the only thing in this town that has been given to me. Everything else, I came into this town with my car, my vehicle, I'm sure all of you know it, the black vehicle, black Lexus RX three thirty that I bought with illegal drug money from marijuana ten years ago. I've been in cannabis industry for seventeen years, I'm one of the pioneers in the cannabis industry, and I have a, I have a dream, I have a vision, just like all of you have. We're all prophets, we're all visionaries, we're all strong, we're a community, and I want to be a member of this community. And I'm taking angel investors right now, I can purchase the property on my own if I put my mind to it, but Ruthie, I'm working with you, I'm proud to be on your team, and I'm proud to be a member of this community, and I'm proud to give these shoes back to my man in Tent City. I've walked this whole city barefoot, barefoot, I went to the county jail barefoot, county is dirty. My my ID has been stolen by the sheriff's department, the sheriff's department has stolen my ID, and they steal people too, they steal people. There's missing people here, y'all, there's missing people everywhere, trafficking, but people needs to stop. And I want to be a member of this community, and my dog does too, and my dog can't talk yet, she's nothing banger. I don't know if she will be, she's a sweetheart, but that's all I have to say, and thank you all for my time, and I've got some shoes to return. And uh, lastly, the after-party is at the Quality Inn tonight, anybody can join.
Thank you. Okay, so I don't have any comment cards left over here, so we're going to go to uh the Zoom participants. Ms. Martinez, if you could uh explain to the Zoom participants how to raise their hand so they can be recognized if they would like to make any comments um so that uh we can hear their comments. And Zoom participants, you're still uh required to keep your comments to within three minutes. We do have a clock here, and we will let you know when you're getting close to that time, okay?
If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for public comment, you'll use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. Mayor, I don't see anyone choosing to raise their hand.
Okay, I I don't see any hands either, Ms. Martinez, Ms. Martinez raised, so we're going to go ahead and uh close the citizen comment section, and I'm going to turn it back over to our city manager and our city attorney um to to make any further comments, and just remind the audience that if you look at the agenda, some of the comments that you all made comments on, we will be talking about it uh uh as it come on on the agenda, if you want to hear what the council members are going to say regarding to the comments that you made tonight. Okay, I'll turn it over to our city manager and city attorney for any further follow-up.
Thank you, Mayor, um, with that opening, there were quite a few comments related to marijuana that obviously will be addressed um later on in the agenda. Um, for Ms. Woodward and her desire for more meetings um along, any issues along the river. Um, I think we had connected with Andy Rice, maybe, a conversation. Um, I'm going to encourage Andy to continue um engaging with Ms. Woodward because I think there are a lot of meetings kind of going on and making sure we're getting you plugged in um as you want to be plugged in type of situation, and so I'll make sure to encourage Andy to to keep those conversations going. Um, and then there was the request for an update on the pedestrian bridge. I do want to share, it's an amazing project, um, it's an amazing grant that Andy Rice was able to secure a federal grant, and um like many federal grants, there's a lot of red tape, so it's taking a little bit longer um than what some of our other projects are taking. We finally have the contracts signed with the federal government. We've issued um RFQs for professionals to handle some of the design and research and and those aspects. The actual construction, when we'll actually see something, probably will not be able to happen until twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven for the start of the construction, so it is disappointing because it's an amazing project, it's an exciting project, we got it, and now everyone's like, where is it type of situation, but unfortunately with the federal government, there just seems to be a lot more hoops um to jump through in order to use that funding, so that is the process that that staff is involved for that, and that's all I have from a staff update or a staff follow-up, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Sanchez. Okay, that brings us to the next item on Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, ceremonial items, recognition of the Fire Explorer Program graduates. Chief?
Thanks for having us, council, mayor, city manager. Um, we've got three of our explorers here tonight. Uh, they are three of eight. Uh, five of those were gentlemen and three were young ladies. Um, many of them are out in the field right now. One in particular is attending fire school in Leadville. Um, I, once again, wanna thank, uh, the city, uh, for their support in this endeavor. Um, the Boys and Girls Club, San Luis Valley Retac, members of the Alamosa Fire Department. We had quite a few people, uh, step up and give where they could as far as training, uh, these explorers. And especially, I wanna thank Adam Lopez for all the time and effort that he put into this program and these explorers. Uh, without Adam's help, uh, this venture might not have gone as well as it did. So I really wanna thank Adam for that. Uh, and then I also wanna, uh, express my, uh, my, my, uh, thoughts to the explorers for the time and effort that they put into all of this. It was physically demanding, it was mentally demanding, and, uh, it was an eye-opener to some and others. They embraced it and, and that, uh, uh, they have their sights set on becoming a firefighter. So, uh, it's just kinda feeding into that. Uh, this inaugural class was a success and, and all, at, at the very basic, it's because they got involved in something. And, uh, we were able to occupy over seventy-five hours of training for them, and all of them passed that. And that's, that's, uh, credit to them. So we have one student, uh, attending school in Leadville. We have another student here, Ben, who, uh, went to, uh, uh, firefighting, uh, camp in Salida area. And we have three of our students who are, as soon as they graduate high school, they will then become members of the Alamosa City Fire Department. And, and that is awesome, and that's great for the community, it's great for them. And I look forward to the day that they come back after being hired by a full-time department on the front range somewhere and come in here and speaking to you folks once again. And that, that's our end goal. So with that being said, I'm gonna hand it off to Adam. And, uh, we also have a little slideshow that Adam put together. And that way, we can talk about a lot of the things that they do, but when you get to see it, uh, I think it has more teeth, more spine to it. So anyway, here's Adam. Thank you.
Hi, guys. Thank you. Um, like you said, Adam Lopez, I've been on the department for sixteen years. Can you guys give these guys, these kids a round of applause? I work with the Boys and Girls Club here in the San Luis Valley. And throughout all of our internships and everything that we have for kids, I've had eight kids show up every Sunday for six hours to come and train and show up and give up their Sunday. So to me, my hat's off to them because this is an awesome thing we did. Um, we opened it up, for those that don't know, we started this, this came like a dream and we were, it was just conversations. Then we started in late February, we started talking about it in November and December. And we found some funding through the Boys and Girls Club, through SLB Retex, so that way these guys, so we could start something. 'Cause my goal was to open up this to the entire valley, all kids. And I've had kids from Moffitt, uh, the Goal Academy, Alamosa High School, and yeah, that's it, sorry, middle school. Oh, and I had one fourteen-year-old out of the middle school. So, um, we opened this up from fourteen to eighteen-year-olds, so that way that gives them the opportunity to know about the fire service and see if that's something they wanted to do. But my goal was to teach, train, develop, so that way they can grow and also help and serve the community 'cause we struggle getting a lot of volunteers as a fire service now. And it's become a lot harder because it's a lot of demanding on our time, plus our full-time jobs and everything that we have to do. So my goal is to continue to help these guys grow. So I'm gonna run through a quick slideshow, uh, kinda give you guys an idea of what they did. All right, let me go to the next slide. Um, so we have a requirement to meet a minute and two-minute drill. So these guys have to get all their gear on by NFPA standards within a minute. So all of them can exceed that, they could do that. The next was their air pack and breathing apparatus to get that all on in under two minutes. And they all have exceeded that. So that was constant practice, that was the first start of our day, every day. And as we practiced this, so that way they got proficient and put their gloves on, everything on in a timely manner. Go to the next slide. Um, we did a scenario where you know your limit. So what I did is we all worked really hard, started breathing really hard, sucking down the air. And our air tanks were fully packed up with air in our bunker gear. We drain our bottles to thirty P, or thirty pounds, thirty PSI. And then their pass devices go off. And when that pass device goes off, I was teaching and training them to help control their breathing. 'Cause if a firefighter ever gets stuck in a situation that they can't get out, I want them to know how long they have to last inside a building or inside a confined area, staying still in the event that they ever have to go get rescued. And my leader was Lucia, she lasted an hour and twenty-eight minutes and seventy-two seconds. She beat me, so, but most of them, they beat me, and I did it for fifty-eight minutes. So I owe them all lunch or dinner. So go ahead and go to the next slide. Um, forcible entry class, I'm gonna let Chief talk about this one 'cause he was there for that one.
Um, we had a great opportunity to bring in some instructors who I had, uh, known through my, uh, twenty-eight years of the fire service. And, uh, many of them are throughout the country. We had, uh, uh, obviously you can see there on the board, a couple of folks from Wisconsin, South Dakota, uh, Black Forest. And, but one in particular from Black Forest recently transferred from Chicago. And Chicago is a bit, very busy place for the fire service. They'll, they'll run structured fires daily. And, uh, he got tired of the, the crazy grind in Chicago and moved to Black Forest. Now he's a training officer there. Uh, this, this gentleman, uh, we were so fortunate to have him. Uh, his experience, his, his, uh, knowledge, uh, surpassed anybody in the area throughout the, the country, certainly, with the amount of things that he's seen and done. So we were very fortunate to have these instructors come down. And they taught, uh, not only our explorers, but members of, uh, the Del Norte Fire, Alamosa Fire, and, uh, a couple other fire, uh, folks. So they, they taught a lot of different people, a lot of different skills. Forcible entry is very important. The quicker you're able to get in somewhere, you're, it's, you could get water on the fire. And when water is on the fire, things start to shape up and things go well. So that was very important. Uh, we did that, we did rescue, uh, with the, uh, uh, explorers and everybody in class. They, they learned different carries or drags. And quite often, that was really, really taxing. We had a lot of people huffing and puffing and, um, I don't know if they would last an hour and twenty-eight minutes with how hard they were working then, but it was, it was a great experience for them. And, uh, we also worked on command and exposing them to, uh, seeing the big picture of a fire scene, understanding command and where they fit into that. So overall, it was a great, uh, three days of, of class. Uh, and those instructors who came out, uh, they were, they were, they were priceless. And, and even for the seasoned veterans within the valley, it was a very good training. So I guess on to the next slide.
Uh, the next slide we did is we did a no-site search. So I packed them up, full air, closed off their masks so they couldn't see. They had to follow a hose from one end of the building all the way around. And I went under trucks, we went over trucks. We had to have them climb up ladders, so they did really well, following the hose, helping each other out, making sure that communication was there 'cause they went in with teams, with partners. And they made sure they didn't leave their partner behind. So go ahead and go to the next slide. Um, are you afraid of heights? We did a ladder, a ladder scenario. So a lot of them, the guy to go up on the ladder and kinda see how the ladder works and how we would set it up in a scenario. Because my goal with these guys as explorers is in time, they will get to help us on the fire scene to set up ladders or help us pull hoses and set us up as a fire staff to be in, in a better situation. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Auto X training, so this is the one, I think, one of the two that they really had a good time with is 'cause they got to bust windows, they got to tear apart cars, tear apart roofs. So, but we did everything that we would do on a fire scene. And we showed them, we showed them the techniques and how to run the tools, so that way they didn't get hurt. But that way they had a full understanding. They had to set a vehicle, chock it, make sure it was stabilized. But overall, that was a good day, a good fun day. So go to the next slide. And then their final, so throughout this, they had, what did I give you guys, a hundred-question test? Hundred-question book test. And then everything that they learned, they had to perform it out on our fire at our burn tower. So they got to go through, do a hose advance, they had to force a door, they had to actually pull Chief Stone out of the building. And then we had a, a doll infant, which you see one of the explorers holding up in the top, that they had to go through the roof, climb through the ladder, get in the building and find that, find that baby and bring them out as well. So they did really well, um, and they learned, I assume they learned a lot, but I was hoping they did. So go to the next slide. And that's pretty much them. Um, cleanup is a big part of it. That is what we had to do. Every time that we're done with the scene, they have to help do the work as well. Uh, the end work, 'cause it's not all fun just breaking windows and tearing out spring hoses and everything like that. So they did get to help do a lot of that work. A lot of them showed up on our duties on every Saturday to check trucks, to make sure everything was running smoothly. I would take them and they would run through the entire truck, they know everything in those trucks, so that's what we did. All right?
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So, so don't sit, don't, don't sit down yet, don't sit down.
Hey, guys, you're not getting out of here that quick.
Okay, um, so we're gonna let council members make some comments, okay? Uh, we'll start off with Counselor, uh, Jackie V. Hill, then Counselor Krebs, and then Counselor, uh, Jamie Dominguez.
I just wanna say congratulations to those of you who went through the program. Um, when it was first presented to us, it was an exciting program, and I hope it continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor V. Hill. Okay, Counselor, uh, Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, guys. You, you might not realize it now, but hopefully you'll look back in five, ten years and you'll realize that this was an, an opportunity that would, did not exist before you and that you're literally paving the way for every, every young person that's looking at this and looking at you and thinking, maybe I can do that. So thank you so much for stepping up and being the first ones, and congratulations.
Thank you, Counselor Krebs. Counselor, uh, Jamie Dominguez, then Counselor Liz Hensley, and followed by Counselor Jan V. Hill.
Congratulations, guys. Thank you for sharing your journey. Um, I don't think a lot of people understand that. When they hear firefighter, they think you're just fighting fires, but extracting people out of vehicles, um, doing all this other work, um, it's spread across the board. And I just wanna say, you guys are looking a little buff. Carrying that equipment around, huh? And thank you, Chief and Adam, for, um, sticking with these guys. And I look forward to hearing more stories in the future.
Thank you, Counselor Dominguez. Okay, Counselor Hensley, then Counselor V. Hill.
So also, um, echo what everyone else has said, and thank you, Adam and Chief, for, boy, taking a vision and making it happen. If the three of you don't mind, I would like each of you to tell me if you had one thing that you say you know will stick with you for the rest of your life, a memory or something, what would it be?
And state your name when you come to the mic, okay?
So hello, my name's Josh Klein. I think one memory that's gonna stick with me for a long time is, uh, just kind of like what we did every, every day, just kind of, it's always something that I've wanted to do. Uh, my uncles are a part of the fire service. And so it's just kind of, it's gonna stick, all of it's gonna stick in my head for a while, but.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Ben Kaiser, and I believe the thing that would stick with me the most is CPR training. It was a good time to learn about human anatomy and spend time with the fellow explorers and learn together as a class. I believe that's what I, what I think the most.
Um, I'm Jared Martinez, and the thing that's probably gonna stick with me is probably cutting open cars 'cause not many people do that.
Thank you for getting up there and saying that, I appreciate it. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Jan V. Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, wanna echo what everybody else has said, and especially the Chief and Adam, for bringing this opportunity to these young people. Um, working with students like these every day, we're always looking for opportunities for them to get off, uh, the couch, get away from the screens and go do something. And this is just awesome, and I, I hope we can keep doing this. And maybe we can start to become a place that just churns out future firefighters for our area and and Colorado and this, and this, everything. Thank you. Sounds good.
Okay, thank you, Counselor, uh, Jan V. Hill. Counselor Carson?
Thank you, guys, for, for this program. Just to echo what everybody else has said, um, and good job. Congratulations to all of you. I'm sure it was a pretty, pretty awesome time. Uh, not many other, uh, any other kids are gonna be able to say they experienced that this summer, so that'll be a good story. Um, thank you, guys. And we're, we're proud of you, everybody's proud of you, 'cause you might save all of our life one day or one of us in here, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. And then, uh, Chief and Adam, I, I'll wrap things up. I wanna thank you all for bringing this, uh, to council. When you first brought it to council, I wished I could just go back in time and start all over again and be their ages all over and be a part of that program.
We, we don't have an age limit on volunteers.
Oh, you don't?
So I, I'm just saying.
Okay, you know what, you might see me being a little explorer here pretty soon.
Sounds good.
But I wanna thank you all for inviting me to the graduation, uh, ceremony that you all had at the restaurant. I got a chance to sit down, not only with the explorers, but also with their families. And I can express how proud those parents, uh, were of these explorers. And I just want you all to know that not only do you have city council behind you and all your efforts that you're trying to pursue, but your parents are with you and you're making them proud, uh, extremely proud by the things that you're doing. And you're making a huge impact in the lives of others. The only thing that I wanna do is just encourage you to reach out to other young people in our community, to share with them the benefits and the opportunities of this program, so we can get more people like you, uh, on the program. I kinda look at it like the farm system in baseball, to where they start off, uh, with, with these students who write out of high school, and then they take them up to different levels, and then eventually they get to the major leagues. You all eventually will be in our major leagues in the fire department. And we're really looking forward to you all being a part of that team. So thank you so very much.
Thanks a lot, Mayor, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Uh, is a consent calendar A, Counselor Jan V. Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, please start voting. We're missing one. Thank you. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, up next on the agenda, we have a presentation from outside agency, annual update from our outside funding partner, Alamosa Senior Citizens.
Hello, I'm Lynette Cotton. I'm the director of the Alamosa Senior Citizens. And we just got back, literally, at twelve o'clock today from a trip to Canada. We had twenty seniors with us, and it was a wonderful trip, but we are all tired. Our flight got in about one thirty AM. So, so if I'm incoherent, I apologize. But I want you to know that seniors, the older adults in our community are enjoying the events, um, the activities that we are providing. And we have a lot more participation than, right after COVID, it was a little hard. But we have several people that have joined recently. And anyway, I think we're, we're doing well. You'll notice, we went ahead and, and gave you the agenda of the Canadian trip. And it was, it was just fun, it was wonderful. Um, we do try to provide one group trip per year for, for our folks. And this was a good one. Um, I do wanna thank Counselor Krebs for helping us obtain a next fifty grant in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. So we'll be using that to upgrade some of our furnace equipment. And that was, that was really cool. So thank you so much for that. Yes. And that was, that was really cool, so thank you so much for that, yes. Um, some of the upcoming things we have is we have our annual yard sale, August second and third. Um, it's right there at the senior center, it will be indoors, so it'll be nice and cool in there and if you, if you have something that you just can't live without, I bet we have it, I'm hoping. We also have our early iron breakfast, August thirtieth. And the sad part of that day is that will be my last day as the executive director. So I will still, um, go ahead and help with all the financials for the next year or so, but as far as day-to-day office work, that day will be my last day and I have enjoyed it so much, so. That's kind of about all I have to say, but I do want to thank you all to, for your support, for your encouragement, your financial support as well, but we do appreciate you all so much.
Thank you, thank you, so what we're gonna do is I'll open up the mics to, to the council members and then, um, they'll make some comments to you, Ms. Cotton. We'll start off with Counselor Michael Carson and then we'll, we'll, uh, we'll just make it easy, we'll just go down the road this way, okay? Go ahead.
Thank you for your service there and your time and I hope you're leaving with good conditions and you're happy to leave and retire. But, you know, whatever.
Yeah, semi-retired.
Yeah, yeah, that's tough, uh. Do you have, um, can you give me the date or location if we could drop stuff off for your yard sale and we donate items?
We're open from nine to three, yes, we, and we are taking donations from Monday through Friday, nine to three.
Just take them to the senior.
Just take them on over, we have Joey, uh, Robal is our maintenance guy and he works from nine to one. So if you could get him over when he's there, he's been helping us get the, uh, the shed organized.
So from nine to one is my best time.
Yep.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Counselor Carson, Counselor Krebs?
And they might need some help day of, I'm just saying, I'm just throwing.
We always take volunteers, we'll take your money, setting up, breaking down. Volunteers, yes.
Thank you for the presentation, Lynette, and, um, I, I had not heard yet of the semi-retirement, so, um, you know, well deserved. You've been a driving force there for
Thank you.
quite a little bit now and, and it's, I'm very happy to see, um, the progress that it's made. And I'm looking forward to whoever steps, chooses to step into your shoes to keep it moving forward and keep it moving on and, and anything, um, that I can do to help or just, just let us know and so it's the little things I think that make a difference is showing up and volunteering, buying that root beer floats and just recognizing the importance and the need for the Alamosa Senior Center here in the community in all the little ways that, that people don't realize that you do behind the scenes, so thank you.
And thank you, Counselor Krebs, Counselor Jackie V Hill.
Um, thank you, Lynette, for everything that you do for our community, um, I think it's a valuable part of our community to get seniors out and about and, um, it's always nice to see them having activities to do and places to go. So thank you for everything that you do and will, I guess, continue doing semi, semi-retired.
I know, it's been my pleasure.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Jackie V Hill, we'll go to Counselor Hensley.
So Lynette, thank you so much for all you've done, I will say, I remember when you first took the position and honestly, you have really transformed the senior center and made it very vibrant, um, fresh and new ideas, uh, and your passion really showed through, so you've set this up for success as it moves forward, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley, Counselor Jan V Hill.
I wanted to echo a lot what Ms. Hensley just said, you've been coming up here for a while now and giving us updates and and you've taken that senior center to a whole different level and it's welcoming and it's vibrant and things are happening there and I just want to acknowledge the work that you've done to get that thing going again, especially after COVID.
Oh.
I remember a, a couple times over the last few years, you've come here and it's been a lot more somber attitude and, and that, so I just, I really appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, V, Counselor V Hill, Counselor, uh, Dominguez?
Um, I haven't been here that long, but echoing from what everybody's said, you've done an awesome job over there, but I'm curious, the trip, did, what was the most exciting thing about Canada with you all over there?
I think I really, well, we got to ride a tram up to the top of Lake Louise and we saw a grizzly bear. Yeah, we were, we were on just a chairlift, you know, open air chairlift. And down below us was this big, huge male grizzly bear, so I've never seen one out in the open in the wild and everybody. It, it was awesome, yeah, well, and the whole trip was great and we had some of the most wonderful people with us too. We've, we've text messaged each other today saying what a great group we were and, and I think just the friendships made too was part of the fun of that trip.
Good, it's good it went good for you guys.
It was wonderful, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Lynette, I'll wrap things up here, want to thank you so much for your service that you provided, we're gonna miss your updates that you bring to us, but we do wish you, uh, much success in your retirement.
Thank you, Mayor.
And, um, I'm, I'm gonna miss, um, hearing about these trips that you take and.
All you have to do is come on over.
Yep, yep, I'm, I'm, I meet the requirement now, so.
You just have to be fifty.
Yep, yep, I'm, I'm sure have surpassed, have surpassed that one, but, um, really, thank you so very much, wish you the best.
Oh, thank you all again for your support and encouragement through the years, I appreciate you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, development services. A motion authorizing staff to apply for an emergency energy and mineral impact assistance fund. Uh, more housing now grant for the Bard School Adaptive Reuse Project. Okay, Ms. Rach?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council, so I'm here to request permission to partner with the San Luis Valley Housing Coalition to apply for up to two million dollars of DOLA's Energy Impact Mineral Fund Program. It's one of their special programs called More Housing Now and it's to go towards construction of the Boyd Adaptive Reuse Project that turns the Boyd School into housing units and also builds new units on the property. Um, there's not a final unit count because they're still shifting things inside the school building itself, but it's believed to be between forty-five and fifty units of housing and, um, we don't have an exact cost estimate at this time because we're still trying to figure out the gap between the last successful funding package, which was the Strong Communities Application. Um, and Dawn Melgaro is the Executive Director of the San Luis Valley Housing Coalition is working with her engineers. So the maximum funding amount for this program is two million, obviously we can't ask for more than that. Um, there's a fairly decent chance we will ask for the maximum, um, but I don't have an exact figure this evening. So we need council's authorization to even apply for these funds. This is the same funding program that we were successful with last year, the one that helped fund, uh, portion of Tierra Zool, which is the housing development on Craft Drive. So I am here for any questions, if there are any.
Okay, thank you so very much, uh, Ms. James, um, we'll go ahead, I see Counselor Carson has his mic on.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, allow staff to partner with the housing coalition and apply for the EIAF grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion, Mrs. Hensley?
Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and abstain, I am the President of the Board for the Housing Coalition, so.
Okay, thank you, so we have a motion, we have a second, there's no further discussion, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously with Counselor Hensley abstaining from the vote.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, under Public Works, second reading and public hearing for ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty-four and ordinance amending the requirements for when sidewalks are to be added or upgraded.
So this is a second reading, uh, we went over this at the last council meeting, Deacon was in charge, but he's thankfully on vac, a much deserved vacation. Uh, and so this is just changing where we trigger the improvements to a sidewalk, so if you're doing a remodel or an addition to your home at this current time and it's valued at twenty thousand dollars or more and you need upgraded sidewalks or new sidewalks on your property, it's part of the improvement, so if you do twenty thousand dollars of improvements, you're automatically on the hook to either fix your sidewalk or put in new sidewalks, which can be a huge added expense. Uh, we are asking a staff to move that up to eighty thousand dollars in improvements to the property. Uh, we believe that that is something that accounts for the amount of inflation since this rule was originally adopted. Um, it was adopted in, oh, no, I don't have it. Um, long enough ago that it is time to look at this rule again because twenty thousand dollars is a very, very small improvement, so it's maybe a small porch, whereas when these rules were adopted, um, it was actually quite of a significant improvement to your home, so. Two thousand one. Two thousand one, thank you, I can't read that fast, so. I am here requesting that we do this for the community so that it makes it more fair and it also encourages people to improve their properties, doesn't penalize them by making them have to improve their sidewalk and then Public Works will be following to talk about improvements to our sidewalks throughout town, so just makes it a little bit more fair and accounts for inflation.
Okay, thank you for, for those comments. So what we're going to do now is open up the public hearing for ordinance number fourteen twenty twenty-four and ordinance amending the requirements for when sidewalks are to be added or upgraded. If we have one, anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments during this public hearing, please come to the microphone, uh, and make your comments regarding this.
So I am really glad that you're doing this, I had no idea I was just here, but, um, earlier this, um, spring or summer, I'd heard of a little old man wanted to build a garage. Who knows how long he'd saved, you know, to put a garage onto his house to whatever and he couldn't do it because he was being required to put a sidewalk and I'm like going, wow, that's, that's too much, so, um, I think people should be able to build a garage on their property without having to build a sidewalk, you know, that's, they're, they're two different things and you shouldn't be able to force people to do that, so, um, I'd be happy with a hundred thousand dollars the way things cost anymore, so, but thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the audience who would like to make any comments during this public hearing before we go to the Zoom? Okay, please come up to the mic, speak into the mic.
Um, do you want to say my name?
Yes, please.
Uh, my name's Amber Dawn Terrell, um, my question actually pertains to that, I, I thought that public side, that the sidewalk is always public. If it's a sidewalk and it's next to a road, isn't that required by the city to repair or do anything? To that sidewalk, if you're claiming that sidewalk to be private or public as opposed to private in the home of the person who owns that land, it's, it was just a question, I don't need it answered, but.
We'll have, um, our city attorney respond in a few minutes, okay? Thank you. Okay, in.
Sure. And on that note, honestly, I don't believe that it's actually anybody, as in humans' right to really claim any land to be public or private. I think if anyone's gonna claim public land or private land, it should probably be a native to this land, as in an African or a Native American, not an Indian from India. Um, but beyond that, uh, I appreciate everybody coming tonight and speaking, I can imagine you are all exhausted. And you all have probably jobs that you do during the day that don't just entail things for the city, but also taking care of your own family members. Even if it's just thinking about them while you're at your job, so I appreciate the time you've taken away from them. Even if it's just to wait for a phone call home or to a parent or a loved one, so I appreciate you all.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, um, I don't see anyone else coming up to the podium in regards to this, um, hearing, so we'll go to Zoom. Uh, Ms. Martinez, if you could share with the Zoom participants how to raise your hand so we can recognize them in this public hearing before I bring you back to council?
Yes, sir, if you want to speak for this public hearing, you'll use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen if you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised.
I don't either, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close, um, this comment section for the public hearing and I'll bring it back to council, Council, uh, Michael Carson.
Um, I have a question for Eric, um, for full transparency, should I abstain on this issue because I'm pretty sure my sidewalk was the first one that beyond a spray painted pink? I was like one of the first ones, so I have a sidewalk in front of my house that is in disrepair and I was gonna repair it. So I almost feel like I should abstain from this vote, just because I.
If you have a contemplated remodel that would, uh, be over the twenty thousand dollar threshold and therefore require you to repair or replace the sidewalk, then I would say, yes, you have a direct financial interest, but if you have no currently pending contemplated remodel, you do not have a financial interest.
Okay, no, I don't. I was just gonna fix the sidewalk, because it was spray painted pink.
And, um, this is the result, if you, if you want to make any comments to that question regarding the sidewalks, um.
Only if council has any questions.
So I was gonna give a little discussion on the, the life of a sidewalk, um, so sidewalks usually are supposed to be built when development is happening and, and it's a requirement of development. It's an important aspect for public infrastructure. Sometimes when development's coming through, those requirements might get waived or, or things like that. Once the sidewalk's constructed, the responsibility to maintain the sidewalk from trip hazard, clearing it from a snow debris perspective, all of those types of thing is the responsibility of the abutting property owner, um, type of situation. And so most of that responsibility goes out to the, the middle of the street actually, or the middle of the alleyway for those that have alleys and so that responsibility to keep clear that public area of snow debris, any type of hazard is, um, the responsibility of the private property owner that's abutting the property.
Thank you, thank you, um, Ms. Sanchez, Counselor Jan V Hill.
Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
That we approve on second reading, ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty-four. My second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Counselor Carson, your mic is on, do you have any?
I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries, okay, if we don't have any further discussion, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, second reading and public hearing for ordinance number thirteen twenty twenty-four amending the pedestrian safety zone to include Highway two eighty-five between Main Street and Seventh Street.
Thank you, Mayor, um, as you will recall from our discussion at the last meeting, uh, the Alamosa's pedestrian safety zone runs from Denver Avenue on the east to just past where the highways or where, where the streets join back together on Highway one sixty on the west and covers Main Street and Sixth Street. Uh, one of the issues we have with making people aware of the pedestrian safety zone is if you enter into that zone on Highway one sixty, you will see the signs. But if you enter into that zone by coming off of Highway two eighty-five, which is West Avenue, you won't see those signs and so you'll proceed east on Sixth Street within the safety zone, not knowing that you're in it. Or you'll proceed west on Main Street within that small remaining portion of the safety zone, not knowing that you're in it. And we would like to sign the, the zone to make clear that you are entering that zone when you come in off of West. Additionally, there is, uh, some increasing development along West Avenue, which is Highway two eighty-five between Sixth and Seventh Street. Uh, we've, staff has checked with CDOT on posting the safety zone signs, CDOT's requirement is that they can't be posted outside of the zone, or at least not very far outside of the zone. So if we want to post the sign, uh, concerning the pedestrian safety zone for motorists coming in off of two eighty-five, we need to extend it, one of the requirements for pedestrian safety zones that CDOT has is that there be connectivity um, uh, of, of pedestrian access within the zone and there. within the zone. And there is such connectivity, staff believes, and I think CDOT agrees on Seventh Street. That connectivity doesn't really extend south of Seventh Street. We had a question at first reading of whether maybe we should extend it down to Tenth. We don't really have the pedestrian connectivity to do that. And the conclusion is that any cross traffic crossing two eighty five on Tenth typically does so at the light there on Tenth. So um, we believe that Seventh to Main is the appropriate extension of the safety zone. I'm happy to take any questions. Otherwise, we have a public hearing scheduled.
Okay, we'll go ahead and um, open up the public hearing and um, bring it back to counsel after the public hearing. So at this time, I would like to uh, open up the public hearing for ordinance number thirteen, twenty twenty four. Amending the pedestrian safety zone to include highway two eighty five between Main Street and Seventh Street. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments during this public hearing, now is the time up to come up to the podium and uh, make your comments. Okay, I don't see. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm just wondering, is this just a matter of putting a sign up there on on, on between Seventh or Sixth and Seventh? Is that, is that what it is?
What we do, um, Ms. Brown, is you could state your question and we're taking notes and then.
Okay, so I have a question. Is this a matter of putting up signage? And, and I guess, you know, I just have to ask between uh, for pedestrian safety. Will State and Eighth ever be included in a safe zone with all the people we have walking in wheelchairs and walkers and things like that? Um, will that area ever be an area that we want to keep safe for pedestrians? If that's posed as a question.
Thank you. Okay, um, go ahead.
Um, my question is pertaining to the sidewalk in general, whether or not you're putting up signage or not. My question is, if that sidewalk is running inside of or in front of a building of some kind, a store, a storefront, a car wash, whatever you call it, who's responsible to remove the sidewalk from debris and ice and snow? If it is considered public sidewalk, isn't that the responsibility of the people who are in charge of the public, as in the governing agency of the public? And not the people who either own the private land that that public sidewalk is being asked to be put onto? Or whether or not that actually is going to cause problems in your waterway? As there's cars coming in and out of that, there's semis, there's a lot of semis coming in and out of town from different areas and whether or not anyone has asked the water, what it would prefer. And that note, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so um, I don't see anyone else coming up to the podium. So we'll go ahead and go to the Zoom participants. If we have anyone on Zoom who would like to make any comments in this public hearing, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen so that we can recognize you and allow you to make comments. Okay, Ms. Martinez, I don't see any hands raised.
I don't see any hands either, mayor.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. Bring it back to uh, counsel, uh, and also our staff for any additional comments. Um, does staff have any additional comments before we turn it over to counsel, Mr. Suez?
So Ms. Brown's question uh, is an interesting one. The primary motivator was the sign, the need for a sign which CDOT, I, I mentioned CDOT's requirements. Um, but there is also increasing pedestrian activity there. And she brings up an interesting point on state. The, the issues that we have, I think, are primarily on the uh, two US highways, highway one sixty and highway two eighty five. But state does see a lot of traffic, so that's something that counsel may want to consider um, in the future.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarification. Okay, uh, Counsel Yann V. Hill.
Thank you, mayor. My question is on the uh, on Seventh Street going on to Twit. I know what we're doing with this motion tonight, um, or the second reading, but that, that turn, that turn going from Seventh on to two eighty five. If you're going nor, going north, trying to go across traffic, that can be pretty gnarly at times. Especially with the growing population in that area. Getting, get, oh, a way to get to the elementary school, is there any future plans from CDOT because it is a state highway to maybe put a, a stop sign, a stop light there or something? I know it's a short road than what would be from there to the highway to the uh, to the other set of lights by Domino's and that, but do you have any comment on that?
I, I, we, we can make a note and ask CDOT. They're probably gonna look at what kind of stacking's going to occur, how far away it is from other intersections. Um, they're gonna look at, just knowing from when we want to get the, the light at Pike. They look at how many traffic accidents have you had? What's the trap, the counts for traffic? Um, all of those types of things. So they've got a very methodical um, formula that they use to determine if signage or a, a light is, is gonna be put in. But.
Can we, can you ask them to?
And so it's specifically two eighty five and seven?
Seven.
Okay.
Okay, Counsel Carson.
Um, just uh, uh, I just want to put emphasis on the comments that Eric made. I agree with him. Um, that intersection is pretty busy. Um, and we should just make a note and add that, try to add that or incorporate it into the safety zone. Probably as soon as possible because probably twice a week, three times a week, I almost see somebody get run over there. Like literally at that intersection on Eighth and State, it's pretty busy and yeah, there's a ton of people that are disabled that go through there. So I think that's kind of a no brainer to add to that safety zone. So I think we should really push that um, ASAP and try to get it incorporated sooner than later. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Carson. Uh, Counsel Jackie V. Hill.
Um, I agree with uh, Counselor Carson. That area is very busy and then now the food bank is gonna be on the corner. So it's gonna make it even more busier than it was before. So I really think that we should take a look at that area.
Thank you. Counsel Hensley.
So my question is, is if we're considering this addition, is that something that comes at a later time? We should go ahead and move this now and then bring it back. Okay.
Okay. Counsel Yann V. Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading. Ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry to be a pain because I know it's a pain, but is it possible for you guys to draft this up? Like in the next couple months, month?
I think what we're gonna do is put out some traffic counters and have staff take a look at it and have police weigh in on it. And um, Public Works as well. So we want to make sure it's an informed decision as far as what you're looking at.
Okay, and during that process, factor in even if it's an arbitrary guess, the increase in traffic because of the food bank.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And if I could add to that, Mr. Carson, uh, can you get the opinion of the folks who live in that area, of the business owners of that area who deal with it every day? Thank you.
Yeah, we, we obviously can. I just, it, it, we need to make sure if we're gonna start adding these in other areas, we've got maybe some definition of what we're looking at um, type of situation. Because First Street is also heavily traveled. People complain about speeding there. Um, probably Craft is another one from an east, what, or north-south type thing. So I just think before we start adding these everywhere, let's get our hands around what we think are defining numbers type of thing.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Please start voting. Ms. Martinez.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Motion authorizing city clerk to sign the agreement contract with Diligent Corporation for a new um, agenda management software.
Okay, um, so currently, right now, we use Nova's Agenda for our agenda management software. Back in the fall, um, in October of last year, Granicus, which is the parent company of Nova's Agenda, they informed us that they would be, be discontinuing the service. With an estimated end of support date of October thirty first of this year and then end of life next year in September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Um, since we got that notification, we began looking for other options for agenda management software. And then we issued a request for proposals for the procurement of new agenda creation and management platform. We did receive seven proposals. Um, the city manager, myself and the IT director reviewed those proposals. And we have selected Diligent Corporation as our preferred provider. Um, their proposal includes agenda creation, minutes creation, the ability to utilize the software for up to ten other boards. Um, it's gonna include the transfer of data from our current software for up to the, for the past ten years. And it also includes the ability of the software to be ADA compliant as set out by HB twenty one dash one 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 zero. The current agreement attached will have some very minor changes that have been reviewed by the city attorney and their attorneys as well, so.
Okay, counsel, Counsel Carson.
I'll make a motion that we um, allow the city clerk to sign the agreement diligent.
Second.
And just one comment, Diligent's a pretty stout company. So good job on that.
And, and could your motion include um, that the clerk is authorized to do that so long as the eventual contract, because there are some changes, uh, is substantially similar in the opinion of the city attorney to the one that is before you now?
So I'm moving.
Okay, is that sufficient? Okay. All right, so we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Not? Please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Awesome. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Discussion regarding a motion to refer a question of legalizing retail outlets for medical and or recreational marijuana to voters on the November ballot.
Thank you, mayor. Um, just gonna review the information that was contained in your council communication. Some of it was shared as part of the um, public input that was provided at the beginning of this meeting. When marijuana was first legalized in Colorado, it had an option for local governments to either allow it or disallow it within its jurisdictions. At that point in time, the city council chose not to allow it within Alamosa. In twenty seventeen, there was a petition that was circulated to refer allowing medical marijuana stores and a separate one to allow recreation marijuana stores. And both um, of those petitions did gather enough signatures to put it on the November twenty seventeen um, election ballot. Then with those moving forward, the city did use its authority to, city council used its authority to place a question that would impose a five percent sales tax if those two questions were successful in passing. Um, and so that was also on the same twenty seventeen November ballot. The question to allow medical marijuana stores failed eight hundred and seventy nine in favor to one thousand two hundred and eighty seven against, which is approximately a forty percent, sixty percent split. The rec, that was medical marijuana. The recreational marijuana stores failed eight hundred and three, four and one thousand three hundred and fifty six against. That's approximately a thirty seven percent to sixty three percent split. Um, the question on whether to institute a tax if those two were successful did pass with one thousand three hundred and thirty one in favor of it and eight hundred and twenty eight against, essentially the sixty two percent to thirty eight percent. Um, however, since both of the medical and the recreational questions failed, that taxation question became moot. So what is before you tonight is it's our understanding that um, a few council members have been approached by um, the public to place these questions again on this coming November ballot. So city or the staff recommends that you've heard public input, you've, you've got your own thoughts, you have a conversation. And you, you give direction to staff if you want to place retail marijuana and or medical. Um, from a staff recommendation perspective, we would recommend that if you do either one of those, that you do also a sales tax, um, if those are successful. Additionally, if you choose to move forward placing something on the ballot, that either the language or take action that would place a moratorium if they are passed, that would allow time to set up the administrative zoning, those types of questions that would need to be addressed. Back in twenty seventeen, um, when we put that five percent sales tax question, we had to estimate how much revenue we thought would bring in. And then you always want to kind of round it up because that first year, if, if you under um, perform or if you project it, you need to reimburse type of situation. So um, at that point in twenty seventeen, we estimated about three hundred thousand. Um, you, people can have their own opinion if they think that's a lot or not. Um, it's debatable if it would be more because population growth, prices, if there would have been growth in, in revenue since twenty seventeen. However, marijuana tourism has also changed um, with New Mexico legalizing it and, and Arizona as well. So with that, the only other cost we would um, estimate for you is there is a cost if we put it on the November ballot. The twenty twenty three cost to the city was about seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty three. There's um, a few different entities on the November ballot, so our guess is between five thousand to ten thousand from a cost perspective. And with that, we're available for any questions. We also obviously have um, Chief Dingfelder here. If you have any questions for any of the staff or department heads, and we turn it over to counsel.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Since uh, Counsel Yann V. Hill is the one who brought this to counsel's attention, I'm gonna have him uh, speak. Go ahead, Counsel Yann V. Hill.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Uh, just very transparent with everybody. I did get hit up by a few people out in the community for years since twenty seventeen, once it failed. Can you bring this back? Can you bring it back? And I've, I've told people that people don't want it. You gotta give it time. Just let time and more research and see how things are going across the state and other municipalities, stuff like that. Um, and I believe, mayor, that I, I did lead the charge at the um, city council retreat back in May. That's where we talk about big ideas and, and kind of what we want to do for the next year. There were also other people up here who got, who've been asked by people to uh, in our community to maybe do this. So I wish uh, that this group would have gone the petition route again. Um, but we do have in our power, the ability, if there's four of, of, four of us up here, to bring this to the, to the ballot again. We do have that ability and that power. I think the best way would be through a, a citizen question again, but that's not what's before us tonight. And so I want to just uh, offer some data, some facts of the uh, the votes over the last twelve years. And yes, in twenty seventeen, it was defeated sixty three, sixty three percent to thirty seven percent. And the folks who brought that up back at that time, they'd ask me, what do you think? I said, I said it's gonna get defeated because turnout in an off-year election is always low, always. Uh, and it, it was defeated. Turnout for that election was at forty one percent. And so that's just the people who live in the city of Alamosa. In twenty seventeen, in the city limits, there were five thousand, four hundred and sixty five eligible voters. Only two thousand, one hundred and ninety people voted in that election. That's a forty one percent turnout. It was defeated. Um, in twenty twenty, and I just want to compare turnout. So that, that's where my, where I'm going with this. I think, I think we should allow it and get, and go to the, let the voters decide, let people decide. Um, because I don't believe in twenty seventeen, we got the full uh, reflection of what the community wants. In twenty twenty, at the presidential election, the turnout, now this is countywide, right? So I don't, I don't have the number of what the vote was like in this, in the city limits. But uh, turnout Alamosa countywide was eighty three point six percent. Of course, that was uh, that was Biden and Trump. In twenty twenty twelve, in twenty twelve, uh, when all this first started was amendment sixty four. In two thousand and twenty twelve, in two thousand and twelve, when all this first started was Amendment sixty four. And I have the the language of that question up here on my computer. And it says, shall there be an amendment to the Constitution? And it just goes all through all the stuff and retail stores. In Alamosa County, for that question, it was voted yes, fifty six percent to forty three percent. And so in the communication tonight, I'm glad that Heather brought that up, that the council back at that time said, we're not going to do it. Okay, so that was two thousand and twelve, six fifty six to forty three, yes. And then you go to two thousand and seventeen and okay, I want you to listen to this too, counsel. The turnout in two thousand and twenty twelve was ninety two percent general election. So I think this, this is where I'm going, is a couple of things, there's more data, there's more examples of of what has been successful across the state and what has not been successful. And I I see it as like a round three, and this is it. And back in twelve, it passed in seventeen with high turnout, it passed seventeen, very low turnout, it was defeated. And we all know that in three and a half months, turnout is going to be through the roof. We will get a very clear idea of what this town wants, recreational or not, medical or not, and that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yon V Hill, Counselor Jamie Dominguez, and then Counselor Don Krebs.
I just want to address a comment earlier from the audience that this came about from people in the community, not from department heads. And second, I think Yon clarified that we are in a position to do this, right? There was another comment saying that we might have been.
Yes, you have the authority to place a question on the ballot.
Okay, so with that being said, I'll move into how I feel on this. And in the last, what, how many years was it? Seven, seven years, a lot has come out of the cannabis industry from a medical perspective. I have sat on the board with the state of Colorado concerning high potency cannabis for the last three years. So I know some information based on what they're looking at. And with it being legalized in the state of Colorado, the tax question does come second. It never came first with us at any retreats or any conversations we had. It was about doing what our job is to do, which is to give people in our community the opportunity to decide if this works for them now. Another thing around this is accessibility. There are a lot of people in our county who are driving to other dispensaries for medicinal purposes. And if we can dish out opioids at the rate we do in the past ten fifteen years, there's nothing wrong with people seeking their own medicine, however they choose to, whether they vote for it, or it's up to them. With a question at hand, I am in agreement with putting this on the boat.
Thank you, Counselor Don Krebs, and then Counselor Liz Hensley.
Thank you, Mayor. When this was first brought up to me and we had the discussion and and we talked about it, my my personal thought was, well, why not put it in front of the voters, let the voters decide? And so having thought that, I I did my own research and it it mirrors. But then, and I want to thank the media because they really got the information out to the public that we were going to discuss that. And so that's not even a slap at the media, I do appreciate it because the more people that know that we're discussing it, the more discussion comes in front of us. And but because of that, I heard more from the people in my ward than I have heard the entire time that I've been sitting up here. And that made me pause and think that while I have my own opinions and while I I sit up here and I do represent myself as well as being part of that ward, that's not why I'm sitting up here. I am sitting up here to represent the people in my ward. And the people in my ward have spoken to me and they have told me that they are not interested in this. I had to keep that under advisement in the back of my head to hear that there's an additional cost to the city to put this on the ballot. If anything, I am I am very fiscal and I believe in fiscal accountability while I'm up here. And I think it's a waste of money when it's an avenue that if it is popular as the public is saying that it is, then they can take the time to do one more petition and bring it the way they want to before the voters next year or two years from now. And at that moment, they'd have even more data and they'd have more ability to get out there and say something. And so that's that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Krebs, Counselor Hensley.
So I am going to make Chief Dingfelder come up. I just want to do my due diligence. And so what I would like to ask is, obviously, you don't have a crystal ball. And I'm not, but do you foresee and obviously talking to other communities, any major concerns or what your thoughts are in regards to how this will affect the police department?
No, so I I don't. I mean, I've talked to a lot of communities about this and we had, I had a discussion about this earlier today. When this first all started way back then, when they first marijuana first became legal, Colorado had no regulations in place, there was zero. And it was a mess, right? They were trying to build airplanes, they were trying to fly it, so it was a complete mess. Well, I think now they've got what the state has a marijuana enforcement division. In fact, they actually have a at least one agent here and they're putting probably going to put another one here just to do marijuana enforcement. So for that, as far as the marijuana enforcement, making sure that they're following the rules and stuff, I have zero concerns about.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hensley, Counselor Jackie Veal.
Also, like Counselor Krebs, I have received a lot of calls on this issue. And I feel like I represent the people of my ward and the ones that I've talked to are in favor of this going to the ballot. So I just want to say that the people that contacted me are in favor of it.
Thank you, Counselor Jackie Veal, Counselor Michael Carson.
I was hoping my work meeting was going to last till nine, so I wouldn't have to be here to talk about this issue. I've had a lot of needy conversations around this. I've been a bad question conversations with Ms. Shayna there several times. You know, I I really feel very torn about this issue. I really do have nothing against pot personally at all, you know, nothing. I've said it before, if you want, you know, pot, you can drive fifteen minutes in any direction. And I voted no on this every single time, just to be clear. But I'm I'm torn and I'm going to be frank with you guys, I'm going to be real honest with you. I don't think it stands a snowball's chance. You you know, locally, we have a very conservative Catholic and conservative Mormon population in town. So I really don't think it'll it'll fly. And my advice to people that are against it against it is campaign against it and 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 get it voted down. My my advice to people that are for it is do a better job than you did last time because it it got it's got its it got handed, you know what I mean? It got handily defeated. So I I really don't want, I don't want to support this. I think we have enough issues and enough gateways here in town. But, you know, in all fairness, I think people have have spoken and as an at large counselor now, I think, you know, I really think it's probably doesn't have a chance, but I think it is up to the people to decide. And so as much as I really kind of don't want to, I'm going to vote for this tonight, just so I'm clear. And I don't I don't feel good about it, but I think the people need to decide. And I think that I I I'll be super surprised if it get if it passes. I don't think the tax revenue is that big a deal, so I'm just putting that out there. But yeah, I I've, you know, I try to be fair in my in my bringing to my personal opinions up here and the people, the people's opinions. And I've I've done that the last two times and I've voted against it. I'm gonna I'm gonna support it this time just because you guys have done your work and I think the people need to be the ones to decide, not us. I I don't I don't know, I feel I feel pretty pretty torn about it, but I think that maybe maybe I will give it a chance to get on the ballot this time.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. So I'll I'll wrap up this first round because I'm quite sure we're probably going to have a few more rounds just in case. I'm gonna be clear, I wasn't torn about this at the council retreat and I'm not torn about it right now because we have a process in place for situations such as this. Whenever the citizens want something to be put on a a ballot, the process is they circulate a petition around the community to show the needs and desires of the community. That step has not yet been followed. I hear all of your comments about you talking about all these people who have said that they really want to hear about have this put on the ballot, you've been getting all these phone calls. Seven years, seven years, I haven't received one, not one phone call about marijuana being put on the ballot. In seven years, I haven't had one person come to me and talk about putting something on the ballot. But yet you all are talking about you receiving all of these phone calls. The only thing that I got was a text today from one of the constituents, and I'll just read it briefly. And it says, this same issue issue was killed by the voters a few years ago. I argued that things haven't really changed. Retail sales are downs across the state, so the allure of taxes is less and less. I for one would hate to see retail spaces in downtown fill up pot with pot shops. Do we really want to look like Antonino or Trinidad? It's a terrible idea, is what the constituent text, the only one I've gotten in seven years. So how am I going to sit up here? And to me, it's like you're really undermining the twelve hundred and eighty seven people who voted against this in two thousand and seventeen. The additional, I believe, let me see here, it was like twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty seven against eight seventy nine, four when it came to the the question about medical marijuana. And then it failed with thirteen fifty six against and eight oh three, four when it came to recreational marijuana. So I have to applaud Shayna for when she did this the first time. What she did was is she circulated this petition, she followed a process that we have in place. She brought it to city council, city council saw the needs and desire, and then they decided to put it on the ballot. The people voted and the people voted against it. Now, what you're trying to do according to Counselor Yon V Hill, given all these numbers and stats about voter turnout, the the voter turnout in two thousand and seventeen is what actually caused people to vote against this. This was the people, all those other days that you're talking about, really, it doesn't pertain to the city of Alamosa because I'm really concerned with the people in the city of Alamosa, I'm not really concerned with the state numbers or the the regional numbers, the city of Alamosa and the residents that we have here. So I just want you all to think, and I want all the people who are listening, I want you to think, is this right or fair for you to go in and make a vote to undermine the people who have already voted on this issue and voted against it just because you feel that now might be the right time? Is that really fair? Is that the right thing to do to the people? And with that being said, I'm gonna, I see a couple of lights lit up and I'll go ahead and go to Counselor Yon V Hill, then Counselor Jamie Dominguez. But I do want you all to consider what you're trying to do, trying to rush this through council.
Mayor, since you're talking, it might be hard for you to also be facilitating the meeting. But just a reminder to the crowd that comments and those types of things are are not allowed in order for the decorum that we need to have for this meeting.
Yes.
Can I have a process question before he goes?
Sure.
What's the last day that we have to know about this to put it on the ballot? Because you just, what you just said, just because you're right, you're right, nothing you said was wrong. So I can't disagree with you, but what's the last day? Because also the ten grand's bugging me too.
So we have to notify the county if we're going to participate in the coordinated election by July twenty sixth. Ballot content will have to certify by September sixth.
So I should have said that if if you if council provides the direction that you want to take this to the voters, we plan to have it on your next agenda for the coordinated election with the county.
How long did it take to get the petition last time?
The petition timeframe is is gone, they're outside the petition timeframe. So there there is no way to do a petition for a November placement. Is that correct, Ms. Martinez?
Because Ty brought up a good point. He brought up a good point. The people that voted it down last time probably voted just because they voted, they came out to vote for that issue and throwing it in when all this other crap's going on isn't really fair. I mean, I I'm sorry, they Ty brought up a good point and and I gotta, part of the deal with being up here is you got to think on your feet and you got to do things dynamically, you have to. So I I'm taking everybody's input, but I almost wish we could table this because I feel kind of bombarded right now. I intend to, for clarity, I haven't gotten any phone calls. I haven't gotten a single phone call, I've gotten cornered many times and had face to face conversations about this. So just so just so that's clear.
Thank you, Counselor Carson, Counselor Yon V Hill, and Counselor Jamie Dominguez next.
I opened up my comments by saying I was struggling with the same with the very fact that you brought up, Mayor, about not having a petition versus council just bringing it up. And you got a text and I got a text and I'll just read mine too. My preference is put it on the ballot and let the people decide, less stressful for the council, but we're not really. And you, my my, I mean, the numbers are the numbers, Mayor, that in two thousand and twelve, the Alamosa County voted fifty six to forty three percent, yes. That's not a state number, that's here in Alamosa County. And I I and I guess I ask you, the forty one percent turnout in two thousand and seventeen, is that a true? Is that a true gauge of what the city wants? And that's seven years ago, things change, times progress.
So since you asked me that question, I'll respond this way. Probably the best way to get a true gauge is to have them circulate a petition throughout the community. And I think that might give you your true gauge. If we can't get a petition circulated and hear from the public, then there may not be a a need. And I think that'd give you a true gauge, but let me clarify one other thing. I wasn't talking about Alamosa County, I was talking about what we voted on in two thousand and seventeen in the city of Alamosa because that's what's relevant right now and that's why that is not even allowed in the city today because of the turnout. We can never control how many people turn out, but we can look at the results and base our decisions on results. When we try to undermine a process and we try to rush things through just because we have a few people in our ear, that's not fair to the public, it's not right, it's not just, it's not fair.
So then I would say let them let them decide it on a vote.
Yeah, after they circulate their petition, I'd be glad to let them settle it on the vote.
You know, you said that we are the you just said that the let the petition hat like let them get a petition and get that going. Yes, and we we represent folks, just because you didn't get a, you haven't gotten one thing in seven years. Maybe people realized seven years ago that you were against marijuana then and you're against marijuana now, so why would they even bother you?
Well, show me a petition, maybe I'll be wrong, I'll take your petition. And if I'm wrong, when we get your results from the petition that they circulate, I'll say I'm wrong. But I think we have a process in place that we must follow and think about following because every time if we try to change things just because things didn't go our way, what does that look like to the public? Okay.
Again, just a reminder on the decorum, we need to make sure we're taking limiting the comments out from the the public section and and not being disruptive.
I'm sorry, sir, we don't, we don't allow citizen comments, so thank you for your having your hand raised. But yeah, but here's the thing, we're not going to tolerate any comments by the audience. If you all, right now, this is the segment, we did give you your three minutes to where you could have made comments and that's the comment section, we don't go back and forth with the audience and have conversation because it becomes disruptive. So that's why we're not trying to be disrespectful, but we just don't do it, we never have and never will. Thank you. All right, so we're going to go to Counselor Jamie Dominguez.
Um, yes.
Um, yes. Um, I'm a little uncomfortable right now because I asked this question at the beginning when I looked at this lawyer, if we were in the right place because of a comment, whether it needs to be a petition or not. So I don't know if that's a staff thing that, you all need to hash out, or, or, because that's why.
No, we don't need to hash that out. You have the power of referendum, that's what this is. So you can refer issues to the electorate, any issue that you want.
Okay.
You have that power. But what I, what I wanted to throw in for your consideration, because it hadn't been brought up, and I'm not taking a position on this at all, but just a, a practicality issue is, um, although Ms. Martinez indicated that a petition is too late to get it on this November of two thousand twenty-four ballot, um, the timing of petitions is such that a petition could be circulated, uh, that would require that we hold a special election, um, not a November election, so that we could not coordinate that through the county clerk's, um, November elections. We'd have to hold that one ourselves. And the other thing to bear in mind, if you, if you refer a measure to the electorate, you define what that measure is, you, you set the language of the referred measure. Whereas with a petition, the petitioner set the language. Now, typically, that's a, uh, an ordinance petition, so you can take the vote and then do with that voted ordinance the same thing you would do with an ordinance that you enacted, you can amend it and change it, move it around. But the petition language that was used in two thousand seventeen was, from my legal perspective, um, not good. It, it was poorly worded, it was confusing. It purported to tie council's hands in terms of what you might do in terms of regulation. So that's just something to consider, and like I said up there, I'm not taking a position on that, staff's not taking a position on that, I just throw that out there.
Okay. Councilor, uh, Hansley?
Um, so I think this is, like everybody said, this is tough, but I, I guess I just want to throw something out there is in regards to us putting something on the ballot, we have put things on the ballot. Um, so we've done the street tax on the ballot. I believe, I could be wrong on this, that we actually one time put on the ballot for us to get raises, or we talked about that. So I do think there are times that things do get on the ballot that are not petition focused. So just sort of to put the groundwork there and talk about it in honesty.
Thank you, Councilor Hansley, and Councilor Carson.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna bring up. I mean, part of the whole, the, this gig is trying to figure out if you're gonna put stuff on, what you're gonna do and, and making calls on the fly. Um, what is the cost to the city for a special election? Fifteen, is that what it was last time?
I have no idea. We have not had a special election. We've always coordinated with the county, and that's cost us between five to ten thousand. So if we're going into a special election, that's gonna be probably that cost, plus I'm gonna have to rent equipment from the county, so.
Yeah, I thought we had done a rough estimate a couple of years ago, and it was like fifteen to twenty thousand for all the special election. All right, thank you.
So even if there is a special election, it's still a part of the process. If they get the signatures and we have to have a special election, that's a part of a process. You all are talking about these other two things, street sales tax and also the raises being put on the ballot. Um, when we decided to do the street sales tax to put it on the ballot, there was a lot of research that went into that by staff to make a justification. This is not like a street sales tax. This is us making a, a recommendation to put an item that was defeated in two thousand seventeen by the residents here in Alamosa back on the ballot without allowing them to go through the process of getting a circulated petition so that we know that there is a real interest and a desire of the people in Alamosa to have that on the ballot.
But we did have a citizen-led committee that went through the city and did that. So, I mean, this is just like one of those issues, we, we, we could do that. You know what I mean? We could have, I get it, I get that's a giant pain in the ass, but I also don't feel comfortable just throwing it out there either. But I also don't feel comfortable not listening to everybody. I get, you know, my opinion isn't paramount. And so, I don't know what the heck to do here. Like I said, I really wish we could table this, so this kind of sucks.
Thank you, Councilor Krebs, thank you, Councilor Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, and, and the, the background information is, is beneficial to help round out a decision. So I do appreciate both of you bringing that to the table. What it boils down to me, and again, going into this when I first heard it, was, you know, why not? You know, bring it up in front of the people. But at the end of the day, for me personally, um, and I was taking notes the entire time for public comment and taking the temperature of the voters, even to do a small survey of that was, even in this room, how many people spoke for it and how many people spoke against it. My hesitation is the financial piece of it. My hesitation is I feel that there wasn't enough notice to the public that we were gonna discuss this. The media did a gr, a, a, a good job getting it out there, but to make a decision with about a week's notice to the public and then whatever we decide, we have to finalize within two weeks, the end of the month, basically. I think this is too important of a topic to not do a half-assed job with it. I think we need to put more thought into it, and even though we've all sat down personally and, and done our research, and I'm not knocking it, I feel that the people in our individual wards, you know, for or against, um, should have the ability to have more time to have a voice with it. Thank you.
Won't their voice be in a vote?
But I think if, I agree with that, which is why I'm hesitating. And so I do agree with that, that, that it would be in the vote, but again, it goes back to the fiscal costs for me because this is an unnecessary cost. I probably push back on the special election, to be honest with you, because that seems exorbitant as well. But I also feel that if it's that, if there's that much of a ground swelling of support, then to Ty's point, we would have a petition sitting in front of us and this would be a non-issue.
Again, I, my, and I don't want to re, keep rehashing this, I just keep going back to the, there's the petition, and yet, again, like I said in my first comments half an hour ago, I wish it was petition, but yet we are still a representative of the community, and if people hit you up and say, we want to do this, we have the, we have that power and that ability to do that, okay? And then, um, okay, a question for you, Holly. There is no way that they could go do a petition and submit it before the end of the month?
Not unless they're really fast. We have to coordinate pretty quickly.
And how many, um, signatures is that?
It's a percentage of the last election, so whatever, however many voters turned out in two thousand twenty-three. It's a percentage of the.
Which is low because it's an off-year election. And there's no, there's no language of it has to be from certain, like, does, because we've talked about this, we haven't, I don't, this isn't true, but, like, it doesn't have to be certain from this ward and certain number from that ward, none of that, right?
No, it's a percentage of the overall. We never changed it.
Okay. Can, can we get that number?
Councilor V Hill, to your point, to your exact point, oh, I'm so sorry.
I think Carson was first, and then we'll.
Oh, no, please.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, one second, one second, let me make sure he was finished. Okay, good. Councilor Carson, then Councilor Krebs.
So I have a solution, I don't know if it's legal or possible. And, and it might be a compromise for both sides. Is it possible for a citizen-led group to donate five to ten thousand dollars to the city to pay for an item to be put on the ballot? I'm asking, I'm just asking, and I know people don't want it, and I know people do want it. I, I don't know what to say here. I, 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 I wasn't at, I, full transparency, I'm having some health issues, and I wasn't at the retreat on Friday when they were discussing it. So I'm just trying to be, I get, I get everyone's point in the room. But, you know, I, I, I really have issue with the money too, it's, it's taxpayer money. And I already voted it down once, and so I think it is kind of a waste of money. But is that legal? Is it possible? Is that something that can be done, Eric?
And I just want to jump in, it's been mentioned several times, being discussed at the retreat. Um, it was brought up under the miscellaneous agenda item, and it was discussed maybe five minutes, um, where Councilor V Hill was just indicating it, that individuals had approached him, I believe another council member had said it. Um, it started to lead to some discussion, but then we, we cut the discussion off because we knew that this is a controversial topic that needed to be in more of the official public meeting. And so I don't want to give anyone the impression that there was a lengthy conversation about this, um, at any other time. I just want to make sure we're clear with that, and then I think you had some questions.
Thank you.
Can I just real, add to that real quick, Mayor?
Sure.
Is that this was, that, like, there might be the perception out there that this was a back-room deal and we're trying to just ram this through. I don't, I don't believe that at all. We, I brought it up at the retreat. We started to talk about it a little bit, and we all agreed we should have the discussion out here in public. So I, you know, we're not trying to ram nothing through, it just so happened that it's running up to the, the time limits of getting it on the ballot or not. That's why it seems kind of rushed tonight, but.
And to, to answer, to address your question, Councilor Carson, um, I mean, the, the charter is pretty clear on what happens if there, so to get a, an issue placed on a ballot as a citizen-initiated issue requires ten percent of the last vote for mayor, um, to get it on to the city's general election, which would be our election in two thousand twenty-five coming up. We have a general election every two years, our next one is two thousand twenty-five. So that requires ten percent of the vote, Holly's calculating what that is. If there's fifteen percent of the vote for mayor in the prior election, then it can go on to a special election, and the charter requires that the city call and hold that, and the city just has to budget for that. I, I, I would be very uncomfortable with people being able to buy, um, their way onto a, a city ballot.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Suiza. Uh, Councilor Carson, did he answer your question? Okay, Councilor Krebs?
And, and I guess my final point, um, just briefly going back to, um, Councilor V Hill's. I, I keep hearing that the, the last petition was circulated before two thousand seventeen, and that was before my, my time obviously on the council. But why was that the last time a petition was ever circulated? Why hasn't there been a constant having it before us year after year after year to show us and, and the, the general public and the people that live here that there is a consistent want and a consistent need for it? So that's, that's where my brain goes, but, but thank you.
Uh, so for the last vote for mayors, we had a one thousand six hundred and seventeen votes for, so for the fifteen percent, only two hundred and forty-three signatures, and then for the ten percent, it'd be a hundred and sixty-two.
So they'd have to get a hundred and sixty-two signatures by the end of July. Holly, a hundred and sixty-two signatures by the end of July.
But within ninety days, I believe it is.
Well, they also have to go through the process of getting the question approved by the clerk. That takes a couple of weeks, that isn't gonna happen.
Okay.
Hey, I don't see any, go ahead, Councilor.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. Let's see where we're at. Uh, I move to refer a question of legalizing retail outlets for medical and or recreational marijuana to voters on the upcoming November ballot.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, go ahead.
Would this be the time, as we're doing this, that we need to say that we'd want it as two separate things on the ballot? No, and what about the tax? Do we need, nope, okay.
Once you have this vote, then we would ask you on.
I just want to make sure, okay, thank you.
Just, just to be clear, the reason we need to know whether you want to refer anything, whether it's one question, two questions, four questions, is that we have to let the county clerk know that we intend to participate. So that's all we need to do at this juncture is decide whether we're going to be participating in the, uh, November election or not. Otherwise, we have nothing else on the November ballot.
That is technically correct. I think if you guys make it clear so we can use our efforts to draft what you give direction on would also be wise as well. Good point.
Hold on real quick. They can still circulate a petition because you can, we, all we gotta do is say that we're gonna participate. And if they don't make the, I mean, what's the penalty if we don't participate? What's the cost if, if we, if we say we're going to and then by, you know, in their two weeks, it's a hundred and twenty-six signatures? I got that in one day when I was running for election. I, I, like, seriously. Well, but the thing is, is what's the deal there? Can they do it or not? What happens if they don't?
There's, there's a, there's a hangup there that we have to get language, and we have to, I think there's approval of the language, and then it can go out for circulation, and that could take weeks.
Yeah, it just feels super rushed, like, like, it just feels like, if you went through all this stuff with the petition before, and now we're getting it jammed down our throat in two weeks, I just don't feel comfortable with this at all, like, I really don't. This, this is not.
Um, hold on, we're, 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 we're making comments in this comment section. We, we had a motion in a section, se, we had a mo, motion in a second, and we're having discussion. And I have something I would like to say, um, for those of you who are considering, uh, your votes right now, just know, um, improper planning on other people's part doesn't necessarily constitute an emergency on our part. We're not pressured to have to do anything right now. If people really want this on the ballot, they can do their work, they can do the due diligence, they can follow the process. It's nothing, if, if they want this to be voted on, uh, at the next election that's coming up, there's, there, there's no big deal. But to wait till the last minute and, and for you all to feel all anxious and rushed and, 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 and concerned, there's a reason why you're feeling that way because you're feeling pressured, because you are being pressured to do something that I believe undermines the twelve hundred and eighty-seven people who voted against this back in two thousand seventeen. But if that's what you want to do, uh, make your vote, uh, known to the public so that they will understand what your stances are. So we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Okay, please start voting. You'll, you'll see, you'll see. I think we have it, there you go, um, Ms. Martinez, if you could, use it on the screen so that they can see.
They're gonna, we're gonna put it up right now.
Okay. If you could state the yes votes and the no votes, so there are no who voted yes and who voted no, that'd be appreciated.
Give me just a second, I'll share the votes real quick.
Okay.
It should have been clerk. Okay, so there's the votes on the screen. So the motion passed four to seven with Count, uh, Mayor Coleman, Councilor Krebs, and Councilor Carson voting no.
Okay, all right, thank you. That brings us to the next item?
Nope, 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 nope. So, um, so that is, that was a vote for both recreation and, um, medical. If you guys could discuss if we should also prepare language for a sales tax. Um, and then do we need anything in regards to the moratorium?
Uh, we'll have, we'll have plenty of time to deal with that, but if you do feel that you want a moratorium, just a motion to direct staff to prepare one of those for a future meeting.
So I'll move for the moratorium because I do think we need time to plan it out.
Second.
And then, and then the question of, uh, you can vote on that.
So the question, the question is, should staff prepare language for a moratorium that would take place if this does pass from a voter's perspective in November? That would allow us time to address any zoning discussions, um, including public input, um, and any backroom, like the administration and how to regulate it and all of those types of things as well.
Councilor Carson?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So this is a legal question for Eric, and I know we've had these conversations around, um, the big box stores. Is there, when you're creating the administrative piece, is, is there language that you can, that you put in that keeps people, like, these outside companies from coming in here and just setting up shop here? You know, there's big, these big companies that are not here. You know, there's big, these big companies that are not here. You know what I mean? Is that possible to do?
You mean, could one of the regulations be you have to be a local owner or something?
Yeah, something to that effect.
I doubt it, but that's why we would need time to think about that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, alright, so. Was there a motion made on this?
You have a motion in a second.
Okay, and and just to be clear, for those who wrote on this, this is basically saying that. Where if it does pass that we, we have that moratorium so that council and staff could work out all the details.
Well, it's actually just directing staff to come to you with a mor, moratorium ordinance, which will be completely separate issue. We just need to know whether you want us to do that.
Okay.
Tax is also a separate issue, yeah. Correct.
Okay, please vote.
The motion carried unanimously.
And the next thing you need, councillor Suez?
Would be direction, a motion for a direction to staff to, or or. Or council, actually, a motion that council would refer. A taxation question for additional sales tax on medical and or recreational marijuana.
Can I ask a question before that?
Yeah.
Can we, do we need to make a motion to break this up to be medical separate than recreational on the ballot? Or is that something that'll automatically happen?
Well, no, we'll come to you with the questions at a subsequent thing.
So you'll do it as two separate ones?
Well, you can either combine them at that time or tell us to do them separate, yeah.
Alright, so I'll move for the tax.
They'll give you time, they'll have placeholders if you think the amounts are different, all of that kind of stuff.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
If not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Any other? Related motions we need regarding this issue?
That'll do it.
Okay, alrighty. So that brings us to the next item on the agenda. City manager. Legal first reading of ordinance number fifteen twenty twenty four. An ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on skilled gaming arcades or skilled gaming uses through June thirty of twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Mayor. The impetus for this issue arose because the city staff was recently made aware of an interest on behalf of. Certain citizens in establishing what's called a skilled gaming business in Alamosa and. Frankly, nobody on city staff had any idea what that was. So we've poked around a little bit about it and. As is indicated in your novice background materials, these are becoming more popular throughout Colorado, Colorado and actually the nation. And they're kind of a gray area between, is it casino gambling? Is it a pinball game? You know, what is it that we're talking about here? And there is enough concern that Chief Dingfelder did some research on this and and I have poked at it a little bit. There's enough concern that. Staff believes that we need, if there is interest and there appears to be in these kinds of businesses in Alamosa, we need to think about. Whether and how to regulate, administer, zone for that kind of thing. It, anecdotally anyway, there is some association of these kinds of businesses with increased crime of various sort. And Chief Dingfelder and I can be available for more discussion, but. The chief actually found a very interesting. Video that kind of gives a little bit of background on what it is that we're talking about. Because like I said, it took us a little bit to wrap our heads around it. So if you agree that that would be helpful, I'd certainly like to play it. For you, it's about an eight minute video, kind of gives a, it's a news report on, on what the issue really is. I, I can do city attorney screen. Oh, it won't be on Zoom? Okay. Do you want me to forward this to you then? Alright, Holly will play it. So that, that kind of was an introduction of what it is that we're talking about, something completely new to us. There is. State regulation to some extent on some of this stuff and Chief Dingfelder is making his way up. One of the communities that has had particular problem is Grand Junction. They have put a moratorium in place for over a year now while they try to figure this out. And they have talked with the state gaming commission. Who essentially has said, look, we're not interested, if you're not Cripple Creek, Blackhawk or Central City, we're not interested in coming in and and helping you out or or dealing with regulating what you've got going on. So, George, go ahead.
Yeah, so. I, I did a little research on this. This, Eric actually brought this to light. There was some newspaper articles that came out of Grand Junction. So I followed up with the chief in Grand Junction. So over the course of about two years, they had twenty five of these establishments, these arcades. And immediately they saw. Businesses and residential areas, they started seeing all kinds of illegal gambling, drug activity, theft, vandalism and violence went up. He told me they had shootings, robbery, fencing of stolen property, drug sales, drug use and everything in between. Over the course of two years, they spent twelve thousand manpower hours dedicated to this. And he said, you know, seventy, seventy plus arrests over that. Between November of twenty three and January of twenty four, six search warrants seizing over fifty thousand dollars in illegal proceeds, hundred gambling devices. And then I, I talked with Pueblo. Pueblo just did an ordinance and outright banned them completely. And talking with the chief up there, they've had at least two homicides that they can contribute that were associated with, associated with these, with these facilities. So I think really alls we're asking here is just put a moratorium on them so that they can't, we can't get them established here.
And I think it came to our attention because some of these businesses may be looking at Alamosa. So it is a very relevant timely situation. And, and doing a moratorium that feels like a big deal, but what it does is it gives us time to really figure it out and and. Collect more data instead of just, you know, three days worth of data. And so. Collecting that data and allowing council to have more time to to process it, you may decide that we don't need to regulate it. You may decide that we need to ban it. You may decide that we only want it in certain zone. Areas. So it just gives us time to really figure out what we're dealing with and not be behind the ball on it.
Yeah, and I think to follow up on that a little bit, as city attorney said, you know, there's, there's no regulations on these. So they come in, set up, do whatever they want. And I think that video there was pretty telling about. That's pretty much what Grand Junction saw. That's pretty much what Pueblo saw. Pueblo just seized sixty of them. I think it was Monday night, they seized sixty of them and made several arrests and stuff. So again, I think we're just asking for a moratorium to figure it out.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Councillor Carson, then councillor Yann V Hill.
I was gonna make a motion.
I just have, yeah, I'm gonna second your motion, but I'll just, I guess I'll ask in the discussion.
I was gonna make a motion that we approve ordinance fifteen dash twenty twenty four on first reading and set it for a sec, uh, set it for a second reading and public hearing on August seventh, twenty twenty four at seven P M. We're assumed thereafter as the matter may be heard.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just a quick question.
Sure.
Are any of these types of machines in, in Alamosa at all? Like, could they be in the?
Not that we're aware of.
Not that we're aware of at this time. We do know that there was some. A company, I believe, out of Pueblo. Interesting, right? Pueblo just banned them and there's a company out of Pueblo we heard that was interested in, in bringing them in.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor V Hill. Okay.
I was gonna make a comment. Two years ago, I had a buddy of mine who's an investor asked me about this here. He's like, hey, have you thought about it? And I just. I looked at it, saw some of the stuff I had heard in Springs and in Pueblo, just cast it aside, but I've heard of this for a while now. So, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, second. No further discussion. Please start voting. Okay, Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Awesome. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Human resource risk management, first reading of ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty four, amending the established pay plan for city officers and employees.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is my first time up here. This is the first reading for ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty four, amending the pay plan. This amendment is a budget neutral amendment. What it's doing is it's restructuring the water and sewer division. We're restructuring one of the. Water wastewater technician, three positions. That position right now, as it currently sits. Fills in at the water and the wastewater treatment plant, but they also do a lot of field work. So they get pulled away to do that field work. This amendment would designate that position to solely be in the water and wastewater treatment facility. Creating the talent pipeline for, to create operators and have a succession plan for plant operators. And Harry's here to talk about the importance of that.
So I thi, I think one of the things that we've struggled with over the years is, is retaining employees long enough where they kind of start moving towards. The licenses needed to, to work within the plants. What this does is it takes, let me back up just a little bit, the wastewater technician, three position that we would be removing is unfilled just because it takes so much time and testing to get to that level. Uh, and I think it's, it's just important that we restructure and try to figure out how do we do a a long-term succession plan and and dedicating an employee that's an entry level, has the kind of the the raceway to become an operator and then an O R C within the, within our, uh, plants is so important. We've, we've tried to, we made some adjustments a few years ago. It's just not working, but we have a good group of young men that where we can start uh, grooming them and providing that path to, you know, replace Roy and Daniel and and Randy here in the future. So I think it's, I think it's a good plan and something that will benefit the city here in the upcoming years. And I'd like to see the council would support this change.
And, uh, sorry, I just want to say one other thing. Um, so it is just taking the one position, but in the, um, new structure, you'll see the two positions. And that's just creating that that career pathway for the operators.
Okay, alright, council, what are your wishes? Councillor, councillor.
Um, I make a motion to approve that we move forward with the ordinance twelve twenty twenty-four to approve the pay plan.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, please start voting.
Also, just to follow up a little bit, um, we do want to be transparent and clear as this is a, a budget neutral move within personnel, we're gonna be looking at some of the data, the workload and potentially in twenty twenty-five, um, in that budget, backfilling that position that we're, we're pulling out of the collection and distribution side. So I just want to give you a heads up, we are looking at it, depending on what the, how the numbers read, we'll we'll potentially be bringing that to you in the budget.
Thank you.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
No, it wasn't. Harry kept trying to put the fear in me.
Awesome. Okay, council, we're getting closer to the end of this, uh, meeting. Uh, committee reports, do we have any committee reports? Councillor Hensley?
Unfort- well, I don't wanna say unfortunate, that's the wrong way to say it, but I've had three of them. Yeah, um, so we'll start off with marketing board. Um, obviously lots of really great things they're doing. Um, I guess the only thing I would really point out is they are actually starting to allow food trucks in the parking lot um, during certain days of the month. Um, and so they're allowing one large and one small, uh, food truck. So that's something interesting and different. Um, tree board, uh, was, it's always such a good passionate group. Uh, one of the things is with the tree match, um, that they do, they had six that got approved. Uh, they still have some extra money, so each year they want to get better, and so they're trying to figure out ways to actually get the word out more because last year we had ten. And then they're try- tried something new called Air Pot Trees, which allows the roots to do their own thing. It's actually really cool. Um, and so they actually tried that out and had them planted because we do have some challenges with the success rate of our trees. Um, and so far that's been really good. So some good exciting things there. They also are applying for a really good sized grant, um, that would bring a lot of trees to the south side. Um, the way the grant is set up, it'd have to be on the south side. Um, and I don't, I forget the number, but we're talking many, many trees. Um, and then the last one I was in yesterday was the main street board, uh, super exciting. Three murals have been done, um, not by the main street, but obviously things that are happening downtown. And four are starting soon. And then one of the things that's really happened on First Fridays, they're doing what they call takeovers where whatever organization sort of takes over the first Friday and does a lot of things. So September first will be Alma is taking it over. And they're having six spaces with music going. And they're also gonna have a roving music section, so that has really turned out to be something I think will really grow on the First Fridays. So that's kind of exciting. So that's it.
Okay, thank you, councillor Hendrick. Councillor, uh, Jackie Vio.
Um, so we had the lead, um, meeting this week. There wasn't really a lot of new information. She just went over a lot of data that she had presented before. Um, they have a new opening for a case manager because one of their case managers, um, left. And so, I mean, there wasn't really a lot with short meetings, so. Is there anything that I missed, Heather?
It it wasn't a main focus, but I do think it's exciting. So I think a lot of the individuals were excited about the turnout for the Hope in the Valley ribbon cutting. Um, it was really a big community turnout and, um, we're really excited about that and excited to have an inpatient treatment facility.
Thank you, councillor Jackie Vio. Any other committee reports, anybody? Okay, not, we're moving on down the agenda to, uh, staff announcement. Oh, you councillor. Okay, alright, staff announcements.
Okay, I know it's late. Um, so we got notice out just a little bit late, later than we normally do this week. But we do have our regular volunteer pickup tomorrow at Saint Benedict. Um, we're hearing a lot of chatter that there's a lot more abandoned sites than normal. And so any effort to help, um, spread the word and and all of that, it's four o'clock tomorrow at Saint Benedict's. Um, and it is, there's a few more abandoned sites than what we normally have. Um, thank you councillor Jackie V Hill for stepping up. She will be joining Eric to host the farmer's market this Saturday. Um, thank you very much. That is, I believe, from ten to twelve. And so it's for anyone in the community, come, ask questions, get information. Um, so that would be, that'll be a good time. Um, we also then next week, because this is kind of before your next regular meeting, next week is our work session that we have scheduled with the county commissioners. We'll be meeting at Horizon Heights at six P M on the twenty-fourth to do a tour of that. And then we will go to the airport to tour their snow removal and equipment facility. It's not completely constructed, but it's far enough along to give you an idea of of that new building as well. And we'll have dinner and open conversation. So that is next week. Also, next week on Thursday is the employee barbecue, so that's Thursday, the twenty-fifth. It's at Cat Tales at five thirty. Um, and then the next Wednesday, you have a work session. You will be meeting with members of the Main Street Committee to hear about some of the recommendations they would like you guys to consider from a regulation perspective. And then following that, um, Jan and I, I believe, are hosting First Friday on August second, um, from five to eight. So a lot going on, um, in the community and a lot of activities to keep us busy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Sanchez, uh, for those comments. Since since you just mentioned the, uh, barbe- the barbecue and the, there's also the Horizon Tour next week. I will not be here because I have to go to a work-related conference out of town, so I won't be here during those two days. And councillor Hensley's gonna step in and fill in in those spots. And I want to thank Mayor Protem for doing that. Okay, alrighty, so now we're gonna councillor Jan V Hill, um, for council comments, you'll be up first.
Thank you, mayor. Just want to acknowledge all of you up here that we had a, uh, it's been a long time. We've had a tough conversation and a tight vote like that. And, uh, we handled our, we handled ourselves with respect and dignity with all of us, and I appreciate that. Um, and big picture with what happened on Saturday with former, uh, President Trump. It was just terrible and we're praying for him, that he's, he he's okay. And that kind of stuff isn't good and not allowed and it's bad for our country. And I'm, I, I hope that us seven up here can show in our little corner of the world how we can talk and and be civil with each other with things.
Thank you, very well said, uh, councillor Jan V Hill. Okay. Do we have any other, uh, comments before I shut it down, um, and end the meeting? Uh, with with my last comment, any mics? No mics? Okay, so I'll just wrap things up. I, I would like to, um, add a little bit to what councillor Jan V Hill just said is I would like for us to encourage everyone to find ways to find common ground when we have differences instead of result to violence. Violence is not the answer. Talking through it means a lot. We had a, a little heated back and forth today, which is good and it's healthy. But I guarantee you, not one ill feeling is gonna leave out of this room and go out there. And even though we didn't agree, uh, all agree, but we agreed to disagree. And we're gonna move forward, uh, with the council's direction as we move forward. So I would just like to encourage everyone to let's end all forms of hate and start showing more compassion and love towards people who may have differences from us. And let's find ways to see where we can continue to find common ground instead of division. That's all I have to say. And this meeting is officially adjourned.